Evening. Better move this a little bit here, I guess. For now. Welcome to the Milker Township Municipal Building Monthly Plan and Commission Meeting. This time I call the meeting of August 5th, 2025 to order. I'll please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you haven't already done it, please sign the attendance sheet for the record on the round table in the back. Before we begin, no, I'm sorry. Next, I'd like to introduce the members of the Plan and Commission, our support staff. Starting on my far left over here is Ray Reed. Next to him is Doug Prozan. On my right is Tony Sitter. Next to him here is Pete Cabea. In the back and on the right side is Julie Maggio, the Assistant Zoning and Development Officer, and Matt Puzz, the Zoning and Development Officer. And on my left in the back is Matt Wallinger, the Director of Planning and Development, Jennifer Herniason, the Township Council, and I am Gene Strohmeyer, the Chairman of the Plan and Commission. Before we begin, I'll call for motion except the minutes of last month's meeting as written.
Second?
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Milker Township Plan and Commission is a recommending body. It hears testimony, asks and answers questions, deliberates and passes our recommendations on to the supervisors who make the final decisions on issues brought before us. The subdivision and/or land developments, along with the conditional use request application discussed tonight, if acted on by the Plan and Commission, will be considered by the township supervisors at their regular meeting to be held on Tuesday, August 26th, 2025, at 4:30 PM in this room here. First item on the agenda tonight is Erie Shores Property. It's a minor subdivision plan to show the creation of a 0.89 acre lot, A1A, and the creation of a 1.47 acre lot, Lot 1B, from 2200 Colonial Avenue, along the west line of Colonial Avenue, north of West 26th Street and Track 309, and the West Gore Track. Someone here to represent that? Sir, please come up to the podium and give us your name. Name and address.
Alrighty, my name is Jake Slasher with David Laird Associates. We are representing Erie Shores Properties. And the sole purpose is to combine, or I'm sorry, to split up the parcel to have each building on its own parcel. I don't, I don't know if you guys have any questions? Seems pretty cut and dry.
I'm sorry, can you tell your name?
Jake Slasher.
Okay, what about this here?
We have to modify the depth to which. It's not, I believe it's not on the plan.
Yeah, for both, for both parcels, a letter for modification. Yeah.
Anybody have any questions for him? Okay, thank you, sir.
Take them up here for the next two.
Okay, the next one is.
Mr. Chair, we should ask if anybody else has any comments before, please.
I apologize. Anyone in the audience have anything or want to talk about this on all this first item? Okay. The next item on the agenda is 5942 Peach Street. It's a land development plan to show the construction of a 7,225 square foot addition with associated stormwater management facilities and parking at 5942 Peach Street, located at the southwest intersection of Peach and Interchange Road in Track 347. Sir?
Again, my name is Jake Slasher with David Laird Associates. This is to do a building addition for, I believe, as of now, three new tenants. We have those dashed red lines on there to indicate each tenant's space. And it just has the parking in the east, and then there's a loading on the west with its, with its stormwater in the west as well.
Anybody have any questions or any? Skeets go all the stuff.
Yeah, there's a few things that we need in addition to on here. And it's, I'll just run through them kind of quickly. I think you're aware of these already.
Yeah.
Mike is not on, but it is now. We need, the acres to be developed is missing on the applica- are you aware of all these?
Yeah, I got, need more of those, yes.
Okay, and the addition to the cross property crosses a property line, the two lots will need to be combined. The Mill Creek index numbers are incorrect. And then the square footage of the existing building is missing and needs to be added. I can give you this copy, but if you're aware of all this.
I have an email of that, yeah.
And there's a few more small things on there. Sidewalks are required, sidewalks are required and are not showed on the plan. You may seek a sidewalk deferral. The site of the nearest fire hydrant with distance is missing, and the identity of the adjacent property owner is missing.
Yep.
Okay, you have it, well, good.
Yep, and we also got comments back from GPI as well.
Okay.
Good question about the driveway access on the side. Are you, are you trying to put a limitation on left turn turns into the residential area so that ingress only goes to interchange road?
We, we could do that. I don't have any plans of doing that now, but if that's. Not, it has not. We don't see that as a high-volume drive.
I think that, I'm sure it is there for the loading and unloading area.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so you're watching truck traffic from here through there? And this is not the distress?
Not at this time, no.
What, what we had a problem with is they wanted to develop that area as a separate retail business, and the neighbors are up in arms about increased traffic. But if that's just for loading and unloading, it should not be a problem. I almost think they'd have to go down. So what we, we would like to see.
I would think they would go either a right on Spire's, then a left, an immediate left on Marmon, if they wanted to get on. I would, I would imagine they'd want to get right back on interchange at Peach Street quickly as possible.
Yes. We might put in a recommendation that we would like to see a right turn only on, on the spires.
Yeah, okay.
And also, I don't know about the signage. Trucks coming up past the driveway, if you have limitation on truck traffic, there's some type of signage there just in case a truck does go by that driveway and stink. You know, people miss driveways.
Yes.
And I would want some trucks coming through the neighborhood.
Right.
Looking for the ingress. So with some type of signage, I don't know if it would be their responsibility or the township's responsibility where the truck traffic is heading, heading south or west.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, anything else from the, anything else from the, from the audience on this? A sign on the street. You said no truck traffic at the time. Group responsibility.
Do you want me to? Okay. If it's in the public right of way, it would be the township's responsibility. If it's on private property, that's the developer's responsibility.
Okay, the right turn sign that are coming out of the place would be the developer's responsibility.
Correct.
The other one would be the township's.
If there, if there was going to be an additional street traffic signs, yes.
If I may though, if the commission feels strongly about the township placing a sign like that, I think including it as part of your recommendation would go a long way as a message to the supervisors.
Okay. No one else has anything about this? Okay, thank you, sir, very much. The third item on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, I wrote them down, yep. So you want a right turn only on the west side for the ingress and egress? And if possible, I guess if you have a township area of putting a sign in the right of way, but we're aware of that.
Next item is CDC's for 25 Parking Expansion. So land development plan to show the construction of 7,700 square foot, and facilities at 341 Asbury Road located in the southwest intersection of Asbury Road and West 38th Street, Track 330.
Alrighty, again, Jake Slasher with David Laird Associates. We're looking at a proposed parking addition on the southeast side of the building there. And there's a little dash line on the west side. Right now, they're looking at just putting parking on the east side of the parking lot, and then in a proposed future asphalt parking lot on the left. And we have the adequate stormwater for that as well.
Okay, anything for him?
Same thing we're going to need on here, if I'm right. The square footage of the existing building is missing. It needs to be added. Sidewalks are required and not shown on the plan. And the dimensions of the nearest fire hydrant and variance to the nearest one-half minute are missing from the property line.
Okay.
Anyone else here say anything about this?
Hi, my name's Lisa Lockbaum. I live at 4722 West 38th Street, directly right across the street from the school. I think the school's fabulous. It's great. But even coming here this evening, the traffic is so backed up at the stop sign. You cannot, you can't go through the four-way stop sign. I would like to know, has there been any accidents that have occurred at that corner? And the recent, like since last year, since they added on to the addition of the parking lot? Has there, I don't know if we can research that with Mill Creek Police. But the traffic is so bad. If you are turning west on 38th Street, right across the street from the school, the entrance way to the school is right there at the corner. And you literally have to stop, and I'm shocked that there hasn't been any accidents. So my concern is the back, the backup of traffic in that area.
Especially with young drivers.
Young drivers. I mean, literally, I was the first car at the stop sign, and a woman was waiting to turn in, and you cannot turn at the stop sign at all. You have to wait until that car actually enters the parking lot.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we don't have any accident data for that, but we could get that from the police department and could provide that to the supervisors before they vote on the land development plan.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here? The next item is for Burger King. It's a land development plan to show the demolition of existing building construction of 3,582 square foot eating and drinking establishment. These stormwater management facilities and parking at 2872 West 26th Street, located in northeast intersection of Peninsula Drive and West 26th Street in Track 17.
Good evening, Mike Sanford, 4721 Atlantic Avenue. And I prepared the land development plan for this. Basically Burger King is at the location now. They would like to raise this store and rebuild on the same location. So we did look at various options of how the new building could fit on, it's a new prototype, how it could fit on the site. And we looked at different, different options, trying to shift it. It did shift a little bit north and west of where it is currently. And it shifted west primarily because they want to accommodate a double drive-through. Right now, the location only has one drive-through lane and no bypass lane. And so they're trying to get two drive-throughs to increase their queue length and then also have a bypass lane. The other thing is, the existing driveways to the site, one from 26th Street and one from Peninsula, will remain as is. The sidewalk is already existing along all the frontage, and that'll remain. We did go to zoning hearing board a few days ago and received a variance to relocate the non-conforming flagpole. It's too tall. And so that we did receive a variance to relocate that to, we'd like to move it from where it is, just about 20 feet west, so it'll be in a landscape island. And then also, right now, the site essentially has almost no green space. It's all concrete. And if you look at the plan, there's going to be quite a bit of landscaping around the perimeter to bring it into compliance with the ordinance. And then also, we'll also have NCAP islands as well. So we're going to establish green spaces and then have the appropriate trees and shrubs for that. Other than the zoning hearing board variance we received the other day, we're not aware of any other variances or modifications needed.
When can we have our first burger there?
Soon. Yes?
What about the height of the, did they require the height to be brought down? I think it's 35 feet.
They did not. Currently, it's 75 feet tall, so therefore it's non-conforming. And so it's a non-conforming structure. So we requested to relocate a non-conforming structure, and they agreed with that. So it will be relocated, but it will still remain 75 feet tall.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mike. Anyone else care to speak? Okay. The last item on the agenda tonight is for Milker Township School District for property located at 901 West 54th Street and 1001 West 54th Street to install new electronic sign messaging centers in the R1 single-family residential district. Someone here to speak of that? Sir?
Good evening. My name is John Finn. I'm with HHSDR Architects Engineers. I'm also here with Mr. Aaron O'Toole with the school district. And we are here to request the non, or excuse me, um, excuse me, conditional use of the two separate electronic messaging signs to be placed at both the JS Wilson and Chestnut Hill Elementary Schools. These signs have been designed to match the standard of the electronic signs that are currently erected outside of McDowell Senior and McDowell Intermediate here nearby, which those are also in an R1 zoned area. And they're, they're designed and they are going to operate in the same fashion that those signs are going to. Our proposed sign is an Daktronics Galaxy GS6. It's the same type of sign that they have in front of those two schools, the intermediate and senior high schools. And they will be fully controlled by the district and programmed to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The existing signage and messages will appear in the same way that they are there right now. There will not be any animations or audio or any scrolling messages or the spelling effects, flashing lights and et cetera. Those things will be all eliminated. They will just switch from one informational piece to the next at the rate that is specified within the zoning ordinance. Durations for the messages will also be set to match the zoning ordinance of a minimum of eight seconds. And then the lighting levels for this particular sign do match the daylighting requirements. I believe the zoning ordinance is 5,000 nits. The capability of the sign, it goes up to 12,000 with multiple dimming levels down during, for that dusted dawn, or excuse me, dust to shut off time that's required within the zoning ordinance. And then also on top of that, the school district does plan to shut those down at the hours required by the zoning ordinance. We were here last week for the variance that was required because they are, we had one sign replacing the one at Chestnut Hill, so that was allowed to be replaced, but we are just eight square feet, I believe, over these requirements, and the zoning variance was granted last week. So, any questions, gentlemen, at all?
Questions at all?
Matt, did you need to find out what it meant?
No, we looked it up. Okay. We're good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, what is, what is it? 5,000 nits would be equivalent to an LCD screen. TV, big screen TV, the amount of light that it puts off cannot exceed that.
Did you see it, did you see it in the drawing that I looked at the name? Do you have the, uh? The sign design, sign is designed yet?
As far, well, as far as the, what it's going to look like, I could show you a couple of different things here this evening. Let me set this down. Very plainly, and I believe, do you have eight and a half by 11 copies of this? So the sign itself is a masonry base along the bottom here. So this will be a brick with a stone cap. Then the sign, the electronic component of the sign sits on top of the masonry base, okay? Then there will be a marquee banner on the top that announces being the school at that location. Let me dig this out. Product, now this, this is pretty generic. It's not exactly like it's going to be. If there was something that you would want to, want to see, we could probably get a rendering put together for you of that from the manufacturer, but. This is, this is a single side. This is a program, something like that. It just went on the exact, I think, so it's the box that's on the field. That's the origin, you know, around, so there's more traces of matching that.
Okay.
So you can kind of see it there at the bottom. Now, the actual sign itself, now this is all from the home, so there's a panel on one side, a panel on the wall, so it can start sun. But this is just the cap. It's got this array of the inside, the test, and then the program here comes in, here to switch to queues, and software, they, is what sets the actual practice on application. So these, it's not that thick, and then the size is showing, and then there's one on the opposite side.
The sign itself will be moving?
No, the sign is not moving. It flat, it will change the image. Hold it there for a part of time, change the weather. There will be no animation at the part of what that is.
So if you want to correct me here, well, this is the picture of the existing sign at Chestnut Hill. So it looks very similar to this. And the Chestnut Hill there at the top, it's just this newer portion of the electronic message center instead of the static sign that they have.
Correct.
Anything else for him?
Nope.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here to speak about this? That is the last item on the agenda for tonight. Anybody need to take a break around here?
No.
Okay, we're going to go into our discussion amongst ourselves and, and, uh, if you want to stay and listen to that or get your results tonight? Stick around. All right. First item on the agenda, again. Mr. Erie Shores Properties. It's a minor subdivision plan to show the creation of a 0.89 acre lot, 1A, and the creation of a 1.47 acre lot, 1B, from 2200 Colonial Avenue, along the west line of Colonial Avenue, north of West 26th Street and Track 309, and the West Gore Track. Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as long as they modify the, we show on the map.
I second.
Seconded? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
All right, the second item is for 5920, oh, sorry, 5942 Peach Street, the land development plan, show the construction of a 7,225 square foot addition with associated stormwater management facilities and parking on 5942 Peach, located in the southwest intersection of Peach and Interchange Road and Track 347. Any motion?
I would make the same motion again to accept it, the plan, as long as they address the seven issues that we have on the land development, which we have discussed earlier.
Okay, what about the right turn only?
Oh, yes. And of course, we'd like to see a right turn only coming on to Spire's Road, was that?
Yeah, Spire Drive.
And then we would also like to see the township place a sign heading south on Spire saying no truck traffic, yeah?
Beyond that driveway.
Beyond that driveway.
Does that suffice, Matt?
Yes.
Oh, I'll second it. You second.
Any further discussion, Mark? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very good, thank you. The next item is CDC Parking, 2025 Parking Expansion, the land development plan to show the construction of 7,700 square foot parking addition with associated stormwater management facilities at 3814 Asbury Road located in the southwest intersection of Asbury Road and West 38th Street and Track 313.
I will again make a motion to approve as long as we address the square footage, the sidewalk, and the dimensions of the nearest fire hydrant. We have the possibility of locating the entrance further west, so that. Further west or further west? We have the west on it, it'd be west. I don't know if you can really do that with the. The way the property's set up. Topography, there's a ditch, a drainage ditch right there, am I correct?
Correct.
Isn't there a parking lot behind that ways too, right? The entrance. Not good, there are ways around the back, but. Unless there's no way to get from to, like you have around the south. Unless there's no way to get from to uh, like you have around the south side where your driveway comes into the front.
Well, you can, you can access the property from um, the east side off of Asbury Road. There's, there's a driveway down here as well, so people could come down and turn in here. They don't need to come across and go down like this. I mean, you could request a better traffic flow.
How to solve that problem?
Just, yeah, request that they change the traffic flow.
It's either that or another driveway on the north side from the front parking lot.
No, there is one.
There is one.
There is one. That's the one that, that's.
That's why we.
No, 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 going, going, going to the parking lot behind the school. From that parking area to the, for the, to the back parking area driveway, and then eliminate that one on the corner.
I see.
I know, but I'm talking about getting going and across here and tying into this one through your uh, intersection.
It's awful, what I'm.
No, you can't do it in a condition.
Can, because it takes a little more investigation to figure.
So you had, it would make you have one entrance on, off of thirty-eighth street and one entrance off of Asbury Road to the property. And both parking lots would be essentially tied together on both sides of the school.
Well, would it be appropriate to table this and let, give them a chance to investigate that?
I, I don't know that buses come, but if buses come, they should. See, I don't know. Do you have people coming in this way?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I think it's fairly flat land there.
Can we shove this off to the supervisors and have them consider the traffic flow? And actually have the ingress always be on the Asbury side? And even the, that's not gonna help them.
Well, yeah, Asbury and, and the west entrance on further, the entrance further west. Which exists already.
Which exists already, and it.
But I don't know if you can go from.
This, you can get here and you get in here.
So you'd wanna kind of.
Parallel to thirty-eighth street.
Well, he wants to take a road over here. Wrap this around the building. You can request that, I mean, you could request a reevaluation of that.
Also have her come up, maybe she could answer it right now.
Did you wanna say something? Please come up.
I'm Rena Irwin, I'm the CEO of Child Development Centers. And as we were talking, um, we could move the entrance to the, to Asbury Road. And when you go in, you could make a left to the new and a right to the existing. We'd have to redo the lines and then there would only be a right turn, could be off of, onto thirty-eighth at the stop sign. So that no more families are at that stop sign making a left. We don't know of any staff or parents who have been in an accident, but it is congested. Uh, the back area is where school buses drop off. If we redesign that to go the other way, children will get dropped off on the wrong side of the school. And these kids are three and four year olds, it would be very dangerous to do that. But if we do make the only, if we do make the entrance on Asbury.
So you're in here.
Okay. We can redo these lines the other direction, because it's a new parking lot. So you could go this way or this way, and that would stop that left-hand turn right there at the parking lot.
That makes sense. She's making it as if it's a one-way road to get it, to get out.
But you would, you would still be able to go uh, north or south?
Correct.
Okay, so you just come in off of Asbury, go north or south?
Go this way for the new.
Yeah.
This way for the existing, change the lines.
Yes.
And then back here, we come out this way to exit, which is an existing exit now. But the way the buses come in, the buses come in down here and we go this way so that the exit of the bus is right at the door. And children don't cross in front of, in front of their parents' cars or the school buses and drop off.
Makes sense.
The existing exit next to Asbury would be eliminated.
Would be an exit only.
Wouldn't be able to get out.
It'd be, it'd be an exit only, exit only.
Yeah, we would not be able to get out if we eliminated that. Nobody would be able to get out of the parking lot.
Well, her concern is that somebody exiting and she's turning.
Well, I, so I think what, which you could correct me, but I believe that the problem is turning in there, not coming out of there. Because when you turn onto thirty-eighth right there, the entrance right now is like five feet.
Yeah.
The existing one, that goes this way.
Okay.
So now, if we moved the entrance just to be over here, then people would only come out and they'd have to go, which most people go right anyway. Nobody, very few people live.
Yes.
Towards this direction.
Yes.
So now, they'd be exiting to the right here and they'd be exiting to the right there.
That works. That's, that's better.
I'd, I'd like her to comment on, because she's, obviously drives that all the time, but that's all the problem.
I guess I'm just looking here at the thirty-eighth street, Asbury side.
Well, Asbury is here, so if we, if we come in here and go left or right, the lines are the wrong way, just with the lines. And then people will come out and they'll turn right to exit, nobody will be coming in this way anymore. So it will be backed up there. And then the buses, the buses do this and parents, and everybody would go right. So there will be somebody stopping here any longer to make a left-hand turn and make that stop sign congested.
Adding more parking spots, that means that there's more people, more kids, more cars coming and going.
Kids, no more children.
More congestion.
No, they, because this new parking lot, they come out down here on the south side of Asbury. Nobody would be going out here. So as this new parking lot is going this way, they'll use this existing exit. They wouldn't be using that, which then would have cars coming out dirty onto Asbury. But that's down here by As, by the trail, whatever it is. And that would, that would eliminate that congestion right there.
I, I, I see what you're saying, but again, if you're adding, you're adding more vehicles, I mean, it's so congestion.
Well, it's so bad. There, the problem is there is not enough parking right now.
The back parking lot just for the buses?
No, the buses are not parked there, all of our buses.
I mean, they're just, they're the only ones that use that back area.
Parents, we have a car line similar to Our Lady of Peace to keep the traffic moving. So the buses have their time to drop off and parents have their time to drop off.
On the back side?
Correct.
But even in the morning when they drop off, weren't you guys putting up cones to direct people to go in or go? Direct people? Maybe it was an event that you guys were having?
Well, we have, we have to split up our event for parents to be individual classrooms. But those are typically, um.
Are, are there lots to the north as you pull in here? Are these mainly?
I think you should go in this.
Correct.
And you just, they're enhanced parking or people parking?
Most staff park here, which.
Parallel to thirty-eighth.
Some parents that drop off infants and toddlers.
Okay.
That are not on a bus.
Yeah. And then they would have egress here.
Correct.
Okay, but it would be, what we're trying to do is lessen the amount of traffic. So we're gonna have people going down, people hopefully going here. There might be one, two, or seven people using these parking lots that might shoot out the other way, which is less than everybody.
But that's where they pick up the children. They don't, isn't that where they pick up the kids? Well.
You know what I'm talking about?
Out this door, but that's already happening, that's nothing new. That's, that's, this would lessen, well, this would eliminate anybody turning left into the parking lot.
It's gonna lessen, it's not gonna weaken.
And there are no more children in the building, the building is the size of a building.
Right. We have one more suggestion.
Okay.
Is it possible to drive along here? So the thing where everybody would have stuff.
I don't know, we can go off, do that.
Is there a room?
Um, well, the, the requirement of the trees and all that is this thing right there. I don't think that, this is like a pond-ish thing, that's whatever, whatever.
Water retention.
Yeah, that's this right here.
Oh, so you can't drive through. Not, that's a retention area, no.
But there's more tree there and it seems so close to the building.
Take a look at the, that might satisfy her, because then.
Then that's wrong.
Then wouldn't be any confusion.
Doug, we think there's water retention in that green area though, so we can't touch it at all.
Well, I don't know.
Okay, do we, are, you think that it is water retention right there, right? Do we know, does anybody know?
I know, I know.
It's a drainage ditch.
Yeah, it is.
What's that?
It's hard to plant the trees and all that stuff.
Okay.
It drains to the west.
There's a drainage ditch next to the road.
Yeah, south, south, south of thirty-eight.
It's wide though, right?
Got drainage.
Did you, you see what we're trying to do here? We're trying to take the traffic away from the stop signs, so could you come up here for a second?
So, first you're saying is, is you're gonna tell your parents then instead of sitting on the road with their flashers on, waiting to come into the line, they're gonna have to pull in and park and get out of their car to pick their children up, because that's the problem. They're pulling and parking on the street and they're, they're clogging up traffic like a, like a drop-off line. So you're gonna tell your parents, there's no more standing on the street, you have to pull in, park. That's the purpose of the parking lot, correct?
Or parking, that may be eliminating some of the parking.
Because the drop-off line is what's backing up the traffic and causing, causing the clogging of the intersection. So if you're saying we're putting this parking lot in to tell our parents, we're not having a drop-off line, you need to pull in and park and get out of your car and drop your kid off, that would eliminate the backup of the traffic on the road.
It won't, because there's.
Then what's the purpose of putting in the parking lot?
It's not for putting the parking, you can go in and build with that.
Then how is that gonna solve the problem? What's, what is the purpose of the parking lot then?
Because it's always, sometimes the boats are down on the basketball court.
There are a lot of different options here to look at. You could also make that parking lot.
So nothing that you're doing right here then is going to eliminate the traffic problem?
Well, it's not going to eliminate the number of children in the building, no.
Right, and it's not gonna eliminate the traffic problem.
Well, no, what it, what it could do is, is uh, do something different and not use that entrance right next to the intersection so often. I can see where that could be a problem. If they, if you require everybody to come into the parking lot off of Asbury Road, that would eliminate what we're talking about here with somebody trying to turn left into the front parking lot and blocking up traffic behind them. So nobody moves, you know, I can see that happening. So if you can require the people to come into the, off the Asbury Road entrances, that should help it out.
I guess my, my suggestion would be to angle the park the other way, put do not enter signs on the, the egress.
On Asbury.
What's point?
On Asbury.
Yeah, on Asbury. My suggestion would be to angle the park in the other way.
Yes.
Put do not enter signs on here.
Exactly.
People are more willing to visit the signs than just angled parking. Um, and then really, when you come in here, all you're adding is whatever spots these are, be the ones exiting onto thirty-eight. The rest will be coming here.
It's gonna be less people going here. What about putting these straight on and then have closing this and have everybody move down?
I don't think we have enough width here.
You have enough width.
Once, once you straight these up, you have us push the parking lot.
Is, is there a possibility of us coming straight down here and they call me, on the other side of this lot?
That's a drainage area, they said.
Along, along here is the drainage area. I believe it's on this other side of the tree, but not a hundred percent. I know there's, you can't face around here or something, but um, I'd have to look at that further to know.
You could run it through that parking area, but you'd lose park, nine parking spaces.
It would be a lose a lot.
No, just nine.
Is it, is it every day the same people?
Yes. This is a school, the kids come five days a week.
It's, it's the same people dropping off kids and teachers and so on? Okay.
We'd be eliminating it.
No entrance, not an entrance, that would work probably too.
I, I think that would be the, I guess. I don't, I don't see a way you can solve the issue without completely eliminating the exit, but you kind of limit it because the, this angled parking here has to be angled one way or another.
Yeah.
Either you're having egress or ingress or egress, it's gotta be one of the two if you keep the, the entrance there or exit. But I would, I would think the best way to do it would be to have this an exit, you can even put a right turn only facing, come here.
Yes.
And do not enter on thirty-eighth.
That works. Yes.
I think that would be.
Yeah, somebody wants to go the other way, you go around the back of the building and.
And, and as it stifles people getting out on thirty-eighth street, they're gonna use that less and less. And go in another direction. It's probably the best we can do at this standpoint. You know what I mean? It's gonna, people are gonna be waiting there forever to get out. And they're gonna have a tendency not to use that and to come out the other way, because that's gonna be a problem for them. But it's safer for us to have it out only, change the uh, change the angle of the parking spaces and have it an exit only, no entrance in there. And it'll, it'll alleviate your problem to a point, but it's not gonna eliminate it.
So they're gonna all have to come in through the bottom section there.
They would have to come in through the middle or the end, I would, because this parking is head-on, straight.
Or they could come in off of that back and come around the building and pull into the parking lot also.
They could, yeah, I don't, I don't know how much, how much does that use for?
Because that's for the buses.
That's for buses, right?
She said the buses are at different times than the drop-off people are.
But people could enter that way and come around.
Mm-hmm.
This way, you're saying?
Yes.
It's one way, it's one way, right, from Asbury up to thirty-eighth.
Oh, so you can't, so you hypothetically, you wanna cut off the thirty-eighth entrance? We don't want people to enter from thirty-eighth, correct?
The only people that could enter there is the staff that park in that parking lot.
Okay. Okay.
But not when it's the bus line and parent line, you can't, you wouldn't be able to get in there.
You wouldn't be able to do it. Okay, so that's kind of one way, except for the teachers. Okay, I, at, at this stage, it looks like that's the only thing we can do, which would help it. Help, not eliminate it.
I mean, it's a, avoiding that intersection during that time is.
Yeah, if people, pretty soon it gets smarter and come out the other way on the Asbury Road and go to the stop.
Because they're gonna be waiting forever.
Yeah, I mean, already.
So be mean to everybody, when you're there, don't let them out.
Well, I don't use the school, I, I live next to her on thirty-eighth street.
Okay.
And um, my stepmother drops my son off and hits that traffic all the time and she'll sit there sometimes for twenty minutes when we're literally like a minute down the road.
With the existing parameters, it's probably the best we can do at this time. And if it continues to be a problem, we're gonna have to aggressively.
Change the direction of the diagonal?
Yes.
And we're gonna make it a right turn only?
Right turn only on the thirty-eighth street.
Do not enter signs would probably.
And do not, do not enter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, I like that, thank you.
I know it's been congested area for a while, even for a couple of years now.
And, and this will help.
It's a four-way stop and people don't know how to use them all the time.
Can I change my motion?
Yes, please.
I'll change the motion.
No one seconded it, so you keep going.
Yeah, all right, so I would like uh, to see uh, the square footage, the square footage addressed, the sidewalks uh, to be addressed, the dimensions of the nearest uh, hundredth of foot and the bearing to the nearest one-half minute of the missing, are missing from the property lines. So let's address one, two, three, and let's make a recommendation that they change the uh, parking spaces from running, change the, the diagonal of the parking spaces. When you enter on, on Asbury and you turn north, those parking spaces are all to be changed verti, changed, changed.
Face northwest.
Change them.
Yeah.
Then add a exit only sign onto thirty-eighth street. And on the opposite side, do not allow people to ingress.
Right.
From thirty-eighth street.
No entrance.
No entrance.
Got it.
You mean, do you mean at that?
North parking, like to be parked north.
Yes.
Driving north parking, yeah.
Yes.
You do mean close to the intersection?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is only exit, no ingress, and we're gonna change the slash marks to go with.
So there'll now be three ways to get onto that property, one from thirty-eighth coming to the property.
For the teachers.
Thirty-eighth to, to on Asbury.
Correct. One for the teachers and then two, two for.
I don't think we need to get into that detail, but.
Okay.
There'd be three ways to get to the property.
Okay.
Right?
And that's, and that's my motion.
And four ways to get out.
Yeah.
Right. That's correct.
That's my motion and I'm sticking to it. Do we hear our second?
Okay, so as part of the proposal.
No.
No, not yet. As part of the, uh, the, our recommendation, we'll put that all, that stuff in there, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Right. Everybody understands the motion as?
I second.
Okay, you seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
I, I just like to make a comment of observing three groups of people trying to work this out is a very refreshing place for us to witness up here. So I just want to thank the neighbors and also the office and our favorite. That was very impressive seeing you guys trying to work this out.
It was. Very much so.
The slides that you gave them the twenty bucks. I'm sending out a new burger.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, I don't think we have any further.
We got, uh.
Two more items.
Burger King.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Or the condition. In the conditional use.
All right. Burger King. Land, planet shows demolition of the existing building and construction of a thirty five hundred and eighty two square foot eating and drinking establishment with associated stormwater management facility and parking at twenty eight seventy two West Twenty Sixth Street. Located northeast intersection of Peninsula Drive and West Twenty Sixth Street in track seven, number seventeen.
Can I make a motion to approve along with the variance of the flagpole? I think that's only one. Do I have to mention the variance? Oh, it was already granted, okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
Nope.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
One more. One more.
What about that one? What about that one?
Sign.
Milk and Tans of School District. Signage for property located nine oh one West Fifty Fourth and one zero zero one West Fifty Fourth to install new electronic message indicators in the R one single family residential district. Here. Go ahead, motion?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There, that's it. That's the last one.
You need to make a motion to adjourn.
Huh?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Maybe I don't want to yet.
Okay.
Look at this. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Anyone opposed? We stand adjourned at six twenty five P M. Sir.